And the first item will be a discussion of the right-of-way policy. Doug, you're back to the table?
I am.
Good.
So like Jeff said earlier, this is one of the policies that we have been reviewing. So we originally had two different policies. One was called a sidewalk policy and one was called a significant alterations to public right-of-way policy. So the original intent of the sidewalk policy seems to be that we, the village wanted to allow residents to make improvements in the right-of-way adjacent to their homes, but also retain the village's ability to improve it if we wanted to in the future. The significant alterations to public right-of-way policy basically said that the village council would have the ability to approve any major projects within the right-of-way. And so we're keeping the intent of those two policies in this new policy. Simply put, this new policy will say what the village will do in the right-of-way and what the residents will, are allowed to do in the right-of-way. The village will maintain the village improvements that we put in, and any private improvements are going to be the responsibility of the abutters. There is one kind of nuance is that the policy as written does say that the abutting properties will need to sweep or rake the pathways or the sidewalks. That is also in our current policy, so that isn't necessarily our current operations, but it is what's currently in the policy, so we left it that way. The policy also says that the village is not responsible for personal property damage that is in the right-of-way. And I think the last major point is that, you know, if in the future the village wants to make improvements to a right-of-way that a resident has already made improvements to, if we want to go in and put a walkway or make some other, widen the road, anything like that, we would not remunerate the abutters for those, for anything they lost. So if there were some bushes that they had put in, we're not going to pay them for the cost of those bushes. But that's kind of the overview of the policy. Are there any directions or any comments, questions?
I wanted to ask, well, first of all, I wanted to say that I think review of these policies which you've undertaken, Doug, is a great thing. I think we need to be reviewing all sorts of these policies as we're starting to do in the last couple of meetings and then again tonight. With respect to right-of-way, I think over time it's been very, it's become very confusing all around the village, not just in the village core, but in many, in other neighborhoods as well. So I think, I think making these policies, making us aware and making changes as we see fit are important to the quality of life in the villages and the quality of the management of our streets. So I really appreciate the fact that this has been done. It would be up to the council to make decisions on this, which is very clear in the policy, but are there, are there any particular areas of town or streets and sidewalks and right-aways that we're focusing on right now that we think there are some problems we need to, need to straighten out? There, a lot of questions like this do come up from time to time.
Yeah. When we were reviewing the policy, we had that discussion, like, should this be only for old town or is it only residential areas? And as we discussed, we decided, you know, this should be applicable to every property in the village. And so there isn't a particular area that's a concern to us, but we, we wrote it so it would be applicable to every property within the village.
And I think that's very appropriate, yeah. Questions from council members on this? Any?
I just have a, I have a comment. I'm glad, happy to see this because I know as BPAC talks about putting walkways in through the village, who we know we're going into neighborhoods where possibly the landscaping has been extended to the street. So this seems to me it will strengthen the village's position when they want to put a walkway in the right-of-way that's covered with private, with the homeowner's landscaping.
Right. And I wouldn't say it necessarily strengthens, it just clarifies, because I think we already had that ability to do that.
Okay. And you said something a second ago that, you know, as I looked at this and saw that residents are responsible for raking and sweeping the sidewalk, and I thought, how can we hold them responsible for that? But you said something like this is up, it's...
Yeah. Operationally, we, Mike Screws, go out there and they, they clean off the, the walkways and the, the greenway trails. I will say, in, in a lot of other places, they do require the abutting property owners to clear the sidewalks. You know, we don't have snow here, but if that were a concern, the, the abutting properties owners are always the ones that are required to clear and remove snow or ice.
Didn't think about snow.
I'm trying, if I don't mind, I'm trying to recall several years ago, a conversation about that point, and I think what we were trying to get at was the village did not have an obligation to do it.
Okay. Okay. Because I think, you know, especially with older residents who probably, who maybe can't get out and do it, and I just didn't want to have to hold them responsible if they can't, can't maintain the public property, so.
Yeah. And to Jeff's point, I mean, there's different levels of what people will consider appropriate and, you know, if they're always wanting us to go out and clean off a few pine needles, it could be a burden.
Their standards, right, yeah, that's the, their standards, the individual property owner's standards.
Yeah.
We have such nice, caring neighbors around here, and I mean that, that if, if your next-door neighbor is incapable of doing it, I can see a neighbor going out and doing it if, if, if it needed to be done. Okay.
Patrick?
Yeah. I'm curious, has the beautification committee and the neighborhood advisory committee and the bike and pedestrian committee, have they all looked at this, seen this, discussed it, raised it?
We didn't review it with those committees. We did review it in-house with the different departments that are involved in the meeting in the right-aways.
I just mean that they ought to, we should have, I don't know, passed it by them or something? Those are three committees that seem to be, excuse me, those are three committees that seem to be, would be touched by this very policy.
Well, we have to, we have to agree the policy, the council, council has to approve it.
I, I understand.
So now we're doing this, I think it's our decision as what to do. You're, you're seeking other input from beautification?
I'm seeking, I mean, I just think if we got a policy that deals with sidewalks and right-of-way, and we mentioned people are supposed to clean things, why the beautif- I would have just checked, touched base with the beautification committee and are you...
Well, Patrick, I think, I'm not sure I agree on that, because we're setting a policy for what should happen in a right-of-way and who, who's responsible for what. Beautification committee wouldn't be dealing with that policy. They may find someplace in town where they want to do some work or have some work done, and then a question of the right-of-way might come up in that situation, but I don't see it related to their decision.
Well, the beautification committee might have some insight or opinion about who's cleaning what sidewalk and who's responsible.
Well, this states what that is. I mean, I think what we need to do is to make the policy better known throughout the community and certainly to all of our committees and commissions, planning board, historic commission, beautification, things you mentioned, but that they should understand what our policy is.
And it's not a big deal for us to disperse it out and get comments on it.
Is this, are we taking this up now because it's sort of due for review or something triggered this?
No, it just, and it's due for review as we're going through the different processes.
1992, I understand the distance.
Yeah, I was chuckling, Pat, because, yeah, it's due because we recognized several months ago that we don't have a systematic process, so we're just starting a systematic process to review all these policies, and that's what Doug, why Doug is bringing these forward to you.
I guess in general, I mean, I don't want to, not opposed to this, but I think it would be a good rule of thumb if they were updating some ancient policies and it sort of would touch on one of these committees as bailiwick, it might be good to just run it up the flagpole and get a thought before it comes to us.
I think, do you want to run it, you want to help run it up the flagpole?
Absolutely. I attend those meetings, I'll be glad to run them up.
Well, you know, one, one ask, one way to do that is we all have committees and commissions of the villages we deal with, and to, when we attend those meetings with one of the staff members, maybe it's a good point to, especially on this one with respect to right-of-way, which is an important one to do. But I'm comfortable with what we've, what we've got here. Are there other questions? Jane or Jeff?
Well, my comment would be that I would imagine that a lot of the rights and responsibilities under this policy are set out by statute or case law.
Yeah, I think...
And I don't, I don't think that, that the village is in a position to say that it can change that law. All it's really doing with this policy is writing it down so that people are aware of what the status quo is. And I, in reading through the two earlier versions that are being essentially updated here, I don't see a whole lot of substantive change. So I do think this is a much clearer delineation of, of what the response, relative responsibilities of the private property owners in the village are with respect to the shoulders of the road, and of course, an awful lot of people don't understand that their lawn doesn't go all the way down to the edge of the pavil, excuse me, the paved travelway, that there is an unpaved shoulder on either side of whatever width that belongs to the village. And I would, I don't know if it's the case here, but in Connecticut, a private property owner can't get adverse possession over village property, so no matter how long you've got your plantings there, you know, you're never, it's never going to ripen into anything. And so I think this is, is quite clearly put together. I don't believe, I did speak to the chairman of the beautification committee about some of these here. I don't think that the, that the beautification committee is touched by this in particular, although I don't have an objection to somebody asking about it if that's what we're going to do, but, but I do think that this is well put together.
Jeff Morgan, anything?
I support this.
Anybody else with comments? Consensus, we should approve it, but we'd like to see some discussion with different committees and commissions over time as, as possible, I think. Taken to, taking up no requirement, but just an idea to keep, keep the committees up to date on this sort of thing. All right. So just, we're just in a work session here, so we're just endorsing what you've got, Doug.
Yeah. I will, I will spread it out to some of the different committees, and then we can bring it back at a later time to a council meeting to, for approval.
Okay.
Next regular meeting, maybe?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Yeah. Shouldn't take long.
We'll move on to item number three. Doug, you're going to handle that too, I think?
Except I thought I was going to go sit down, and so I didn't bring my notes. I'll be right back.
Bring your papers up. This will have, this is to do with carrying over from last month on reviewing what may be become defunct policies.
Yeah.
And some of the questions some council members had about why we want to do that or should any of them be retained in a different area.
I think a lot of good questions have come up, but again, this is a process, this is a product of Doug's review of the existing policy framework, and, you know, maybe defunct is kind of a harsh word, but if nothing else, many of the, some of the, some of these policies have actually been superseded by other actions that have, that occurred since they were originally written, and others are what you might call stale. So, and I think you have some potential observations or concerns about some of those things that we thought were stale, and so I think it's an appropriate time to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I appreciate your, doing this, and I had a conversation, well, Jane and I had a conversation with you at one point about the background of some of this, so I feel a lot more educated than a couple of weeks ago, Doug, so carry on and we'll go over some of these.
Sure. The first policy that we reviewed was the tree preservation policy, and this was superseded when we passed the tree buffer ordinance, so it's, covers the exact same material, so there's no need for this policy anymore. One of the other policies was the lot donation policy. This was a more active program in the past, and as we reviewed it, we're like, well, there's nothing really bad about this policy, but we felt like, you know, we don't necessarily need a policy. If someone wanted to donate a lot to the village, we'd go, we'd handle it on a case-by-case basis and just review them and see if it was advantageous for the village to take it at that time. So that's our, our thought process there. The next policy was the Warren Manning Beautification Award Program. So this one had kind of gone by the wayside, it wasn't being used anymore, and it was administered by the Community Appearance Commission, which was actually, by state law, had been kind of outlawed.
Yeah.
So there has been some discussion, well, rather than just kind of jettison this, should we bring it up and maybe have the beautification committee, you know, kind of handle this going forward? So that's certainly a possibility, if that's what the council wants us to, you know, look at, we're happy to do that.
I think this is one of the ones that I had a question about, because I remember a little bit of the history of it, and I, and I do think housing it in the beautification committee makes some, makes some sense. I don't know how others feel about that, but this is one of the ones I was concerned about.
Can I ask you a question, my own certification? Who is, who was or is, I should preface this, Warren H. Manning?
Warren Manning was...
This is something to do with Frederick Olmstead, right?
Better, you better turn off your microphone.
That's all right. Hey, listen.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Manning, Mr. Manning.
Manning Olmstead.
Was the, Mr. Manning, who Jeff Batten knew when he was here. Mr. Manning was the onsite operator for Frederick Olmstead and the firm. He's the one that actually did most of the work, weighing out and planting trees and lots of other things in Pinehurst.
Well, therefore, he really wouldn't object to having it been inactive for an extended period of time, would he? I mean, that's what it says. It's been active for an extended period of time.
Well, no, there, there were words made on this over time, so, anyway, let's get serious.
A little bit about the history of this, if I can just...
Yeah, we have it, yep, you did it.
And I have spoken to the chairman of the beautification committee at some length about it. And you already know this, but maybe there are people, there's somebody somewhere who doesn't. Okay. So in the, back in the midst of time, we had the Community Appearance Commission, which was established by state law, and its, its job and its authority were to weigh in on the appearance, the architectural appearance of buildings, both residential and commercial. Well, you can't do that anymore. We can't, we're not allowed, municipalities aren't allowed to judge the architecture of single-family residences anymore. And CACs are no longer authorized by state statutes. So what we have left is the beautification committee, which has a similar but not identical purpose, and its purpose is largely landscape. Back in the day, when they had the CAC and were, one of the things that they thought would be a good idea was to have an award that they gave out however many times a year, one award for residential and one for commercial, the nicest building, and since this CAC group was going around and looking at the architecture for all of the permitted buildings, they actually sort of knew what they were talking about in terms of what's a good example of architecture and what isn't. So they were in a, in a position to give the award in an appropriate way. And having decided that they would give an award, they then came up with the Warren H. Manning name for the award. Well, now that we don't have the CAC and we don't judge buildings this way anymore, there's not really a purpose for that award program, but the Warren H. Manning name for an award is a dandy name for an award. So if we want to hang on to that as a name for an award, there are two different ways possibly it could go. And one way is to have it be a function of the Historic District Committee, Commission?
Preservation.
Preservation, all right. For the Historic District only, for buildings. They've got a lot on their plate, and we'd have to ask them if they were able to do it, if want to do it, but that's one way it could go. And the other way it could go is to the beautification committee with respect to landscaping and as a totally voluntary kind of a thing, much the way they judge Christmas decorations. But again, that committee needs to take a look at the work that's on its plate and the resources it has and see whether it is able to roll that into its other responsibilities. That hasn't happened yet. So that's where I've ended up with Warren H. Manning, which is a great name.
Now that we know who he is, yeah. So, and I would suggest that we go with the beautification route rather than the Historic Preservation Committee. I think that's more appropriate, and, and it's actually village-wide and not just the Historic District, so.
I agree.
So we can take it back to them and see what they think about...
Right.
The feasibility.
And the orientation would be landscaping and that sort of thing, not buildings.
Yeah, rather than architecture, yep.
Good. Okay.
All right. The, the next two policies kind of go hand in hand. So one is significant negotiations and the other is significant vertical construction on village property. So the intent of these policies seems to be the, to require council approval for these negotiations or vertical construction. As we reviewed the policies, we thought that, you know, it seemed kind of redundant. We have a very thorough strategic planning process that, you know, keeps the village council very much involved in the decisions that are made in the village, and we didn't necessarily see a need for these policies. We've had some discussions and maybe council does feel like there is value having them, but we're open to whatever council wants to do forward.
I have a question. What's the definition of significant negotiations? Do we have something in our code?
Policy, it says $25,000.
For both of them?
And I don't think the construction one had a dollar amount, but I could check.
So if something exceeds...
I think it's the construction that was $25,000. Had negotiations, because the negotiations wasn't all financial, I don't think, but it's interesting that, I'll give you some examples. From time to time, I engage in very preliminary discussions with Wayne Vest about, for example, land swaps, which is one of those conversations that's underway right now. This policy would specify and require that from the, from the initiation of that conversation, two council members would be required to be part of that discussion. Is that necessarily the right line to draw in the sand, or is it better for us to, to work as a team and figure out who the right people are to engage in conversations? Significant vertical construction. I think after reviewing this again, I'll give you an example. The work we do, we're doing right now to finish the upstairs wing of Village Hall is, is something this policy would have required you to be involved in selecting the contractor Is that the right line to be drawing here?
Well, let me, let me...
And to Doug's, to Doug's point, I think that our processes, our systematic processes keep you involved at the right level, and I don't think these are helpful.
I guess, if I can...
So there's a, there's a dollar value associated with what is significant, this is to your idea of definition, Pat.
Yeah, that's why I wonder what the threshold is, that's all. I, I'm, I don't see any point in council members be involved with your discussions or whoever's going to be discussing, but obviously there is a point where the council gets involved, and I guess, I'm just looking, I'm trying to figure out where this kicks in and doesn't kick in. That's why I asked for that definition of significant, that it's...
Yeah. But... And I guess what we're saying is that as a matter of process, it always kicks in because the significant kind of work, things we're coming to you with anyway, because everybody's got visibility on them.
So it's $25,000 and two council members, is that, I don't, I don't know what the other criteria are for...
Right, for the negotiation one.
I'm saying if it truly is significant, not, not in accordance with that threshold. I think, but the point I'm making is I think that when I approved the contract for upstairs, I think I violated this policy, annoyingly, but I'm calling attention to that to say that this maybe isn't the right approach.
Well, the significant negotiations policy has four triggers for when council would be...
Different things.
And, and only one of those triggers is, it's the kind of thing that the council, that requires official council approval. So, I mean, maybe we don't need to have two council members involved in the negotiation, but are there triggers for when the council is just told, you know, here's what's going on?
Problem we're resolving.
Well, I'm looking at, you know, at the memo, it says significant negotiations. The council can determine if and when they want to be part of negotiations regardless of the written policy, which is true as long as we know about it.
Don't you know about, though? What significant negotiations don't you know about?
I think that's a, that's a sort of question, I, I look at this not so much as construction of upstairs, but negotiations for other things going on. Let's just say...
A different policy, yeah, right.
You know, let's just say the, the negotiations with the library board to acquire the library and archives, or the negotiations to have the USGA here and the lodge, that sort of thing. That's what I look at in these policies. I'm not looking at the contract level so much and we need to raise and lower those things.
But those, those negotiations you necessarily would know about, and you would say, I want to have these people involved. I mean, that's where I...
You've just got to have some latitude and some, I mean, we have, we have dollar thresholds for you. I mean, we don't, we don't micromanage you. We have certain thresholds, and below those thresholds, you have free rein to do what you're supposed to do. And when you get above those thresholds, then we come in, but we have established thresholds, don't we?
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Do we know what prompted this?
Maybe there's a way to define a right, an appropriate threshold, but I think that's what we're, what we're wrestling with here is what's, how do you define the threshold?
Yeah. Well, the usual threshold is...
So that it makes sense.
Is, historically, it's always been a dollar value in the world. As I said, it's my experience. Do we know why the council adopted this in the first place?
Yeah.
That's, is usually, there's usually an event that causes somebody to overreact...
I don't know about the significant, the significant negotiations that predates my time here. I know, I think, well, maybe not.
Is that right? 2014?
13 and 14.
13.
I don't recall.
The vertical's 14, the significant negotiations is 13, according to this.
Yeah.
That's what it says on the policy list.
Jeff Batten, were you here back then?
He was.
I was there, okay.
That's right.
I was thinking that, I was thinking, I don't know if this is true, so I was thinking that the significant vertical construction policy was constructed as a result of the little Parks and Recreation Annex being built across the street from us over here. That little shed building that's hidden behind the trees?
Yeah?
Yes. What's that?
I said, I've seen it now.
One council member objected. It was in the budget, it was, but for whatever reason, one council member strenuously objected to not being involved in that process. So I was thinking that was what caused this policy, but maybe based on that date, that doesn't make sense.
You know, Jeff, while we're talking about it, we, we were looking at one of your thresholds a few months ago, and we said, is it time to look at your thresholds again? Because it was a really low threshold, like $10,000 or something. We said at that time, maybe we need to relook at Jeff's thresholds, just so, I don't want to forget that conversation, that it might be time to look at some of your thresholds, but, okay.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm not going to be able to add anything on that significant vertical construction. I'm pretty sure I actually wrote it, based on reading it, and I don't recall why it was brought up.
I mean, as you, as you read significant, this is very, vertical construction on village property, it's as if, you know, you would be building the... property, it's as if, you know, you would be building the Empire State Building at the corner of Magnolia and Community Road. I mean, there's something comical about that, and I just can't get my arms around it.
Significant vertical construction you would already be involved in. I mean, that's kind of a. By our budget ordinance, backed into it, on vertical construction, it'd be half million dollars because. And we have an existing contracting threshold. If it's over that, it has to come to you. So. It's built into our budget ordinance. You have delegated that authority to that threshold.
And in fact, these thresholds and those sort of policies have come along since this.
Yeah.
So we were covering the bases twice. It was a belts and sub senders kind of thing. I'm happy to let these two things go.
I'd like to bring back Bull Sorker Hill and get out of the weeds a little bit and look at this from a 50,000-foot level. This is the source of bureaucracy. You SOP yourself to death on doing things. It's like, well, why do we do it? So I fully support a program that looks at these policies and say, do we really need them or not? And if we don't need them, get rid of them. The purpose of SOPs is to establish governance, to ensure that we're doing the correct thing, and protecting the employees to make sure they have the coverage they need. Okay? Let's keep it at that. Thank you.
So, yeah, you're against these two significant negotiations policy. Yeah, I agree. Anybody else? All right, let's move on. Next one is, I think, pretty obvious.
Yes, and these next two policies are going to be policies that, well, they were originally written as admin policies, but they were categorized underneath the council policies. So our intent is not to get rid of them, but just to make them admin policies and have them under Jeff's purview and not under the council. I don't think the village council cares about who's in what meeting rooms for the most part. And the beautification fund policy is just, really, it's us creating a budget amount so that the program can move forward each year.
Okay.
And that's purchasing shrubs and flowers, something.
Right.
I read through the beautification fund policy, and it already says that the village manager is the one who figures out how much money goes into it every year. What needs to be changed? I don't understand.
So there will be no changes. It'll just be categorized under admin policies and no longer with the council policies.
But the beautification committee will remain a committee of the council.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we got a good understanding where the council stands on these, so we'll bring these back at the future meeting for a final vote.
Yeah, I guess we'll have to do that to vote on it. But yeah, with the exception of the Manning, we understand how that's going to be handled, so I think we're good. And we'll be hearing from you in the future about other policies, probably.
Yeah, I'm sure you're very excited.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Doug. That'll move us to item number four. Mr. Sanborn, Mr. Burke, who's been waiting.
Patiently. Thank you, John. As I mentioned before, there are kind of three phases to this approach to regulation of short-term rentals. And that second phase was defined as kind of hanging the meat on the bones on PDO amendments that would be pursuant to our ability to regulate short-term rentals that are in use in the village, or would be in use in the future. And so Darren and his team have started some work on that, and the result is what's attached and shown.
Hi there. First of all, there's not, there's not a lot in here, but what's in here is very impactful from moving forward on the regulatory front. So I'm going to go over just what's in here that's from a PDO amendment perspective, we're going to ask you to look at, and then we can get into discussion. But really, section 4.2, what we're looking at is if we're talking about having any type of permit ability for short-term rentals, there's been a discussion on, well, how can we revoke permits? Well, under 160D, there is an ability to revoke permits, but we don't currently have that nestled in our PDO right now. So what we're doing is proposing to actually install or create a provision, page number, right? So here it is. And Jane, you have some comments that we can go over, and I've got some responses to some of the things that you have said. But what we're proposing here is to actually create a section called revocation of a development permit. This will apply to other types of development permits, and we've heard this issue before. And I've, you know, I've looked at some permits that we've had out there, or, you know, we're struggling with what to do with a property, and there's no ability for us really to revoke the permit. So what we want to do is create this section that allows us to revoke a development permit for these various conditions that you see through here, A, B, C, and D. And these are all coming directly right now from 160D. So it's an allowance under the state's new development ordinances. So that's the one major thing under chapter four. I'm going to circle back. And then under section five, this is the other very important section. Section five is really the land use section of the PDO. And this is where we've been talking about creating that short-term rental category, land use category, and then actually placing it on the table of uses. Table 8.5 is what establishes what uses are allowed in what district. So when I say, you know, coming out of this meeting, what's most impactful of how we're moving forward, or how you're moving forward with this process, it's putting short-term rental as a defined land use on that table, and then putting it under, I think we're proposing to put it under lodging category.
Yeah.
And then as we go over the table, putting Xs where it's, where short-term rental use is potentially allowed, and then no Xs where you would prohibit it. Once you would prohibit it, then it becomes a non-conforming use immediately, or it'll become a non-conforming use as soon as it's effective, or how you write into the ordinance. So with that comes all the non-conforming protections that you have under section, I think, section, chapter two of the PDO. We'll circle back to that. But what we're, really what we're talking about here is this, is this table. Can you?
Shrink that down just a little bit. I've got it on my.
There you go. So this is the table, table section 8.5, and this is how, when you look at our PDO, from a land use perspective, we break out things by residential, industrial, recreational, social, all those, they're in these broad categories. You see what, this part of the table is the residential table. So under the residential table, we have dwelling, single-family, multiple-family, all these types of uses. Then we have all the general use districts that are currently in effect in our PDO. And you can see, the Xs are where these uses are allowed. If there is no X, guess what? They're not allowed in that district. So what we're proposing at this point, based on the input that we've gotten from a consensus of the council, at this point, is to propose to, A, create the short-term rental and define it, and then place it under the lodging section, the lodging table, along with bed and breakfast homes, boarding and rooming houses, dormitory hotel, recreational park. So here's where we would propose that that would be located. And then what we need to fill in yet would be this section here in the table, where do the Xs go, and where are the boxes open? And we'll, and I know we'll circle back to that. The other important part of the section is this SR. SR is the special requirement. So that's a special development requirement that when you come in, it gets applied. So if we create the short-term rental, and we create, and we allow it in various districts, the SR nine would be something that we would, when they're coming in for a permit, we would require a permit, that we would apply these various standards to any short-term rental property coming in trying to get a development permit. So that is where we created a special requirement. It's under section 8.6. Principal uses, SR nine, short-term rental, maximum occupancy.
Hold that for one minute, Kelly. Shrink down a little. I just wanted to read the.
There.
There we go.
Darren, back to your table. You're only adding the one line at the bottom.
Important line, yes.
Important. And then later, you would fill in the Xs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You would fill in the Xs.
But that's, that's the only change right there.
Yep.
The page before that, you're just adding 160D. Okay.
Correct. Correct. There's, in this document that we've sent you, there's only three, really three or four items from a zoning perspective to discuss, but they are very important for this whole discussion moving forward.
Darren, on letter E under SR nine, do you, is there a sense of what's used elsewhere by other communities, about violations and the period of time and so forth?
Three seems to come to mind, but.
Yeah, because we, I think we used three in something earlier we just read. Parking, whatever it was.
That was used on the unruly gatherings.
Unruly gatherings, yes, okay.
Three violations.
For statutory things, like there's a natural stat, there's an actual statutory requirement for, I think it's under the nuisance codes, and how many, I think three is the, three is the number that, once you pass three, you become, it's like, you get on the frequent violator program, things like that, in the course of a calendar year, or a rolling calendar year. So that, again, that's blank because we haven't really discussed it. We haven't, we haven't really.
And the period of time would be something else.
Correct.
Somewhat appropriate.
Correct.
It's consistent with elsewhere.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So those, in short, and then the definitions. And I know we've had some discussion on what that definition should actually be, but this is where, based on some of the comments that we've gotten from y'all, and from some of the discussion that we've had, and I know we'll have more, but this is, we would propose to create, I'm sorry what's going on on this mic, but, section 10.2 definitions, short-term rental, and then is an occupancy that is offered or available by short-term lease or otherwise for a time period or lease term of less than 30 days in a residential dwelling until unit for a cumulative total of 14 days in any calendar year. So these are the, these are the major things that we're asking to talk about tonight. And I'll circle back to the first place, which would be the.
We stay right there, Darren?
Oh, you want me to stay right there?
I've heard it suggested, and I think this is maybe consistent with what we've heard from council members in the past, that perhaps you don't think that a situation where a homeowner is a permanent resident of his or her own property, and is also leasing or renting rooms in the house on a short-term basis is a problem. Because you have a homeowner present there, they can keep things under control.
At home share.
And therefore, maybe they don't need to be regulated in the same way that short-term rental properties that don't have an onsite owner should be. Is that?
I think we've been talking about a distinction between whole-house rentals.
Yeah.
And room rentals where the property owner is in residence, and that's not going to run into the same kinds of problems because the owner is onsite, so.
Adult supervision is there.
Right.
And whole-house means no owner, agent, caretaker present.
We still have the same parking problems and things like that, though, or?
Well, we have now all these new parking rules that are there, that apply across the board to everybody, and those are going to help those situations.
How about the bedroom requirements? Max occupancy?
Well.
What do you mean that, Jeff? What?
If you go back to the special requirement, there's a max occupancy of two per bedroom.
In the special requirement?
That's correct. The maximum, the maximum occupancy would be based on the entire, for the entire unit. So if we're looking at a house, it's a four-bedroom house, the maximum occupancy would be four times two is eight. So that would be your maximum occupancy.
You're changing microphones, aren't you?
I did.
Okay.
Should that still, should some of this still be regulated, even in a situation where there's a owner present?
If the owner's, first of all, if the owner's present, I don't see, they're going to stuff the place with, you know, three times the, if they're living there.
Fine. I think, I think it's a, it's a real, real outlier. But, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
We could work a little bit on that definition to make whole-house. If you look at a lot of the ordinance that we've reviewed, it's all been whole-house where it's been rent, where it's been a specific rental. The owner's not there. The owner being there becomes, I forget what the definition is right now, homestay, becomes a homestay property.
Right, homestay, right.
And that's, that's where we've not really had that issue. We've had, we've had the issues with the, with the short, the concerns that we've heard have been the short-term rentals themselves, where there is an owner not present on the property. And I think that's what was the intent of what we're trying to do with that definition. If we need to clear it up, we can clean that up. That's an easy cleanup.
So should we, should we go back to revocation of development permit?
Sure.
Start?
Sure.
Go right ahead, yeah, sure.
Okay. So, first of all, I think it should be 4.2.12.
Yep, you're correct. You're correct.
In subsection B, refusal or failure to comply with the requirements, and I think it should be of this ordinance, of the development ordinance rather than document. So, failure to, and also in B, failure to comply with any applicable local development regulation or state law delegated to the village for enforcement purposes in lieu of the state. So what are the kinds of things that that encompasses? Does it encompass some of the municipal ordinances that we've just adopted?
Nope. It's things like, if we had a stormwater program. So if we had a stormwater program, so those rules, our floodplain development ordinance, watershed protections, things like that, those are other development regulations that would fall under that umbrella.
Okay.
We don't have those.
So.
Well, we have watershed, we have, we have watershed, we have floodplain regulations.
But they're in the development orders.
Correct.
I guess, I'm looking at this and thinking that this document and applicable local development regulations are the same thing.
The floodplain development ordinance doesn't specifically, I don't think it's specifically in the PDO, so that'd be a separate one.
Or is it?
It's, we adopted it as a separate ordinance, I believe. It's not, it's not actually in the text of the PDO. But, and that wouldn't be the one where it would be, would be most impactful with what we're talking about. We're talking about, even with that stormwater master plan right now, whether we should be, whether we should be adopting and regulating through this, and operating a program through the state, that would be probably the most applicable ordinance that would fall under this. I can't see the floodplain or anything else, really.
So if a development ordinance is revoked.
Development permit, you mean?
Permit. Development permit.
Sorry. If a development permit is revoked, what is, what happens after that? Can a new permit be applied for? Is there a waiting period? Or what happens?
Well, there's, there's two things going on there. So can there be a waiting period? I believe there can be a waiting period. We'd have to build that into the ordinance, so we'd have to research that. What can happen after that? Whether they have to get a certificate? It can be used for a single-family dwelling, so, because my assumption is that most of them, and this is going to require a little bit more research, but my assumption is that most of them have certificate of occupancy for a single-family home, unless it's sitting in a multiple-family apartment building or something like that. But the vast majority of homes have type of, some type of certificate of occupancy, and on that certificate of occupancy, it generally, it generally states what the use of that property is. So if we revoke the development permit for the STR, the single fam.
Still single family underneath.
That's my, that's my assumption.
So under, under section 2.3 of the PDO, which pertains to nonconformities, if you have a non-conforming short-term rental, because we've passed something that says that they're banned in certain districts, but then they're, the pre-existing ones are continuing on as nonconformities, but they have to get a development permit. If the development permit is revoked, is that a cessation of use?
That's where, and that's where we have to do a little bit, because once we've, once we've made them a non-conforming property, or a non-conforming use, they can, they can continue to exist as a non-conforming use, and under the, under the rules of the nonconformity, which means they can't expand that use without a permit, they can't do, they can't intensify that use. They're not required to get a development permit because they've become non-conforming. So I don't think, that's where we have to do, I think, a little bit more. more research on that, because if we make them non, if we merely make them non-conforming, they're non-conforming. We can't make them comply with the development ordinance, unless it'd be, unless we'd use amortization as the tool to make them comply with the development ordinance.
Okay, well, let's say, let's say that, that you have a pre-existing short-term rental in a district which is now, you're not allowed to have anymore.
Correct, yeah.
And this particular short-term rental has certain features of its construction that don't comply with the code. Maybe the, doesn't have an adequate amount of parking, or it, whatever it is, it has, it's able to demonstrate that it has had more people per room, or something like that, whatever the thing. So, wouldn't they still have to apply for a development permit, but the development permit would be issued in accordance with their pre-existing status, and then they simply, they would then just have to continue to comply with whatever the status quo ante was, and they would be subject to revocation if they blasted past that?
I think so.
But I, I think that problem that you just laid out is solved if we adopt an amortization period of two years, because then it's over. It's a, there's a, there's this two-year period, okay, and then it's over.
Patrick.
Yes.
When I hear the word amortization, my brain immediately goes to lawsuit. So you're willing, you're willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted that to be clear, Jane, you too?
What did, what did you say?
I said, when he says amortization and two-year amortization, I immediately think lawsuit, and I asked him if he's willing to take on litigation, and his answer was yes.
Yes.
I think that, my, my advice would be that amortization is an appropriate way, under the general statutes, to deal with non-conformities, but we better have something to hang our hat on that just, that outlines why we think the right, the amortization period we chose was appropriate and fair from a financial standpoint to the people that are affected.
I agree.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, like I said, I wanted to hear some clarification on that.
Yeah. Well, ba- based on what we've seen in the past, there is no period that people who are opposed to this would be agreed to, as far as an amortization period. They weren't. They were opposed to eight years, they were opposed to four years. So therefore, we're, we're sort of shadow boxing, boxing with folks who really didn't put the gloves on.
Do some homework and, and.
I, I agree.
Come up with a common sense approach and say, this makes sense.
I agree exactly with what you're saying.
Exactly.
But you've got to be able to defend it in court, like Jeff just said.
Yeah.
I think we need to do the homework to put together the best.
Make our best case.
Case that we can, and we need to.
We're jumping ahead because.
No, we, we are jumping.
This conversation isn't about amortization or outlawing or prohibiting a district, but.
We are jumping ahead, but, yeah.
I mean, I, I truly believe that you don't have all the information you need to make that decision yet, so.
No.
And I brought it up only because Patrick said the word amortization, and I said, when I hear amortization, I immediately think lawsuit, and I wanted to hear clarification that he was willing to go that route.
Yep. Thank you.
Jane, isn't one of your points, though, you're following up on here, isn't it, that if there's a revocation, then any ability to regain short-term rental status is negated? I think, wasn't one of the points you're dwell, you're drilling to, is that if there's a revocation, the short-term rental ability of this residence is negated. It's gone.
That depends on the, the language of the ordinance. I was trying to think through this, but I, I think we're talking about a situation where short-term rentals are permitted in the district in question, right? I think it's possible to construct language that would prevent a reapplication, but it would have to be, for, for example, codified in the special requirement. It says, cannot have been a revoked permit for this property in the past, or in the previous certain number of years, or something like that. Otherwise, lacking some language like that, it becomes a right, as long as the property owner meets the conditions of the special requirement, then we are obligated to issue the permit.
A s- a second concept when you're dealing with non-conformities, besides amortization, is the, the concept of cessation of use by the non-conforming owner. And we already have that written, and that's a very common, you know, zoning concept, but we already have it written into section 2.3 of our PDO, that if somebody who owns a, a non-conforming use ceases that use for long enough, which is 120 days, under our current section 2.3, except for banks and the village center, and that's only 30 days, then automatically it goes away. So.
Correct.
So, when I'm looking at this, and, and amortization is one tool in the toolbox, and another one is, is cessation of use. So if, if you have a non-conforming short-term rental, which goes forward and does not comply with some of these requirements, like having smoke detectors for the protection of the tenants, or, or complying to the extent that their physical configuration allows, with some of the new standards in the, in the SR9 and so forth, does that at that point amount to a cessation of legitimate use, of legal use?
No, because they've been adopted as, as a non-conforming.
Need to be something that we could.
They, they would have been adopted in as a non-conforming use, and they wouldn't have been required to have a permit.
Yeah.
I, I'm not so sure that, that a non-conforming use doesn't have to comply to the extent possible.
Non-conforming use is allowed to continue to, to exist under the conditions that it existed prior to the ordinance change. All of them.
Even to the point of safety and health issues?
You deal with those in different ways.
That, that's where the, that's where the.
Where you go back to municipal code and.
I understand.
Minimum housing standards and.
Let's look for how these different things.
That's why I was getting to, and I think that's what Jane was hitting at. Okay, you got a non-conforming use, but if you don't have a fire, a smoke detector, the fire extinguisher and all this stuff, then I, I think the village would be on very good grounds to.
Hey, you're not using.
You're not, you can't do this anymore. Now, but you might be have a point of why we can't say that, that's what I'm, that's my attention.
Even though we have this framework of the three phases.
Yes.
We keep going back to prohibition and what to do in terms of, if we prohibit.
The different phase, I know.
Can we focus on.
Right.
How to regulate short-term rentals where they exist?
Tonight.
Yes.
But we're just letting you know that these will be questions that we'll have when we get to the last phase.
But, but, I guess, the one way I want to phrase this is, we, we should reserve as much authority as we can to deal with the truly bad actors on behalf of the village, because we, we don't think, a lot, there's this widespread bad actors running around, but if we have someone that truly are not, we ought to be able to take some action, so.
And, and that's something that we've heard from the proponents of short-term rentals as well.
And, and I will tell you, on that front, we have used section 153, where we've made some changes this evening. We have responded to some, some concerns that we've heard in the field regarding some, some of the short-term uses, and we have applied section 153 effectively to some of them based on some of the complaints. So, it's not like we don't have some of the tools right now, but a lot of them, a lot of the tools, especially the minimum, the minimum housing regulations, they require, generally require some type of complaint, generally from within the house, or, or if they're advertising something that is totally, you know, that requires us to, to do an investigation, and we have, we'll follow up that way, and we have done that.
Okay.
To short-term rentals.
Okay. SR9?
SR9, okay.
Okay. I went back and, first of all, this, good list, I went back and looked at the bed and breakfast list. So, the bed and breakfast list, your, your subsection A, maximum occupancy is based on two adult guests per bedroom. The bed and breakfast SR7, subsection 3, no more than two adults per room will be permitted at any one time, which is a little, I think, better language.
Because, I, I will make a note, and that's because.
What is based on?
You're renting on a room basis, in a, in a bed and breakfast, versus a whole house, we're renting the whole house, so we're trying to determine the capacity of the entire house.
Maximum occupancy is based on, is a little bit.
That's common.
What does based on mean? And then.
So, maximum occupancy is two adult guests per bedroom?
Again, the four-bedroom, the, a four-bedroom example is eight people, eight adults.
You, Jane, just question the word based on. I think we can take based on out of that.
Take, take based on out of it, yeah.
No more than two adults per room, per bedroom will be permitted at any one time.
Because a bed and ber, a bed and breakfast is a different.
I just like that, it just sounds a little crisper to me.
Because you're, because a bed and breakfast, you're, you're renting by the room, right? So it's a room, it's generally a room rental, you're renting this bedroom, it's coming with the bed and breakfast. So they want to, they want to maximize the amount of people who are actually in each of the, in each of those rooms as, as a separate.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
I get what you're saying, but then we, we can't have other governors through the minimum housing regulations.
Okay.
To potentially, and there are, there are some, there are some governors in the state code regarding minimum size of bedrooms, based on square footage, things like that. So we, we also have used that in the past, looking at occupancies.
Oh, I get it, okay. Some other of the requirements in the bed and breakfast, number five, no alcoholic beverages sold on the premises. Number six, no signs advertising short-term rentals use, I don't know if you want to talk about signage. Seven, no modifications to the premises without a development permit, and the provisions of PDO, section 2.3 would apply. And then they also have a number nine, special events such as wedding receptions, parties, et cetera, are not permitted. So I don't know if any of those are applicable to short-term rentals. And then another one that I, I thought of is, if you're using a single-family residence as a short-term rental, should we say that there should be no special permit or other accessory uses, uses allowed on premises?
Such as the shed?
Yes.
Such as a shed, or detached garage, those do fit, those unfortunately are in that, those unfortunately are in that category.
Like, no, like running a, a children's daycare, or, you know.
Oh, that.
Home occupations.
Home occupation, something like that.
Right, home occupation, right, right.
Okay, that's, that makes a little bit more.
Or a doctor's office out of your, you know, whatever.
Okay. With respect to no alcoholic beverages sold on premises, I think that's an ABC requirement, so if they're selling it, that's going to be a violation of that code, they can handle that. Signs, we're, we're pretty restrictive on signs anyhow, you can't really get any, any type of, not a lot of signage is allowed.
Commercial sign, I think it's already covered by our.
That's correct.
Should be.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, I think we're pretty covered there. No modifications, that's, you can't modify without getting a development permit in this community, or generally, generally any place.
Signage? I don't know.
Right, no, we're pretty, we're pretty tight on signage, unless it, unless you're starting, unless you're starting to run into things like, thank you Jesus signs, things like that.
No signs advertising the short-term rental, I mean.
No, that'd be an advertising sign, so it wouldn't be allowed in a residential district.
Okay.
And some of the commercial districts, NC maybe, potentially. Although, with the signs, you might raise a point, we might have to think about that, there might be. So, if we allow something in, say, an NC district, NC is a neighborhood commercial district, there's a signage allowance, so if it's a single-family dwelling in an NC district, do we want, do we want or not want them to have signage? So that might, you know, that might be a point of consideration.
Not a single-family residence, what's, what if it's multifamily? What if, what if it's mixed use? SR9 could still apply, right?
Correct, yes, because it's a short-term rental.
And what, what facts do you expect will serve as the basis for putting Xs in these boxes? Eventually, oh, what, what facts do you expect you might use to put Xs in these boxes?
So you're, so now we're on table 8.5, 8.1A?
Can you restate the question, Lydia?
Eventually, it sounds like you proposed to put Xs in some of these boxes.
We're not, no.
No?
What, this conversation is about how you would regulate, well, yes, Xs, yes, X or something.
Yes.
It'd be permitted somewhere, yes.
And, and my question was, what facts do you expect will be relevant when putting Xs in those boxes?
Well, I think that, that's where you have, and we've seen some of, some of that verbiage, we've seen, that's where you put language in the preamble, and you try and support the case for, for the creation of the ordinance with some of the, with some of the police power language that we have, and some of the other studies that we may have done that, that support some of the, some of the rationale for creating the ordinance. I don't have all that data at this point, as far as.
The big piece, piece that is missing right now is the results of our residential neighborhood quality of life survey. Help us differentiate.
You're connecting dots for me, okay, thanks.
So, are we moving to the table now?
Hoping that that will clarify things.
Well, I, I think whatever we move forward with, from a preamble standpoint, we're going to have a strong purpose and preamble statement with any ordinance that we adopt, similar to when we had the, the buffer development ordinance, and any ordinance that we pass under, under our police powers, we're going to have a strong preamble. How strong that is from a, from a fact basis, and what's needed, you know, that, that may, that may be something that, that a, that a court has to tell us down the, down the road. We will do our best to fill in the, to fill in those boxes. We haven't done that yet, because we haven't, we haven't actually created the ordinance for you, for you to, to evaluate at this point. But we will create a strong purpose statement, like we did with the buffer development ordinance. So.
I mean, before, but, I don't know that we necessarily need data to think it would be appropriate, for example, to have an, an X in NC, OP, VCP, VR, VMU, VC, right? Because those are all commercial districts to, to some degree, that, where the impacts, the described impacts of short-term rentals really wouldn't be a concern.
Right, but it certainly would be clarifying to the short-term rental community as reinforcing where it's permitted, permitted by right.
Sorry?
Where it's permitted by right to have a short-term rental.
Right.
I mean, so, just as this, the, the blank would also be a clarification as to where it's not.
A distinction to this, in other words, flesh out and articulate why those districts would be appropriate.
Yeah.
As opposed to others where they're not.
And then the districts where they're not, then you would have an amortization.
It, it, I mean, it's theoretically possible that you might have different short, special requirements that pertain to different districts, right?
Yes. We'd have to write a lot of special requirements, but yes. Yeah, it could be a long, it could potentially be a long special requirement, yes, we could do that.
I don't think we've used that approach anywhere here, but.
No, but if, if it's something that we think that's worth doing, whether there's a different, if we, if we allow them in the neighborhood commercial district versus a VMU district, should there be a different, potentially a different SR requirement within those districts, something we, we can certainly discuss, and we could build that into the SR.
Like in the village, village center, is there going to be parking? You can't, there's no, there's no dedicated parking for anybody, it's all public parking, so it would be a different set of special requirements.
That is a good point, yes, correct. Because most of the village center properties are non-residential, I believe.
When do you get the results of the survey back? When, when does ETC tell you they are content with their response rate?
Actually, thank you for reminding me, I, I thought I might, I might address that. Actually, thank you for reminding me, I thought I might, I might address that question in my report tonight, but I failed to do so.
Well, you told us how many responses you had, but, but have they told you how many they want to get within a certain...
Say, we got, we've got 285, they want, they'd like to have at least 350.
Give us a plus or minus of what, four or five?
Doug, do you recall? No, it's not, it's not that good.
The other, we got more than we wanted, so we had a...
Probably four and a half or five, it sounds about right, but, so we'll have to keep that margin of error in mind when we interpret the results.
Anyway, how many do you think they want? I'm sorry, did you give us a number?
How many what?
You've gotten how many?
350.
And they want how many?
350.
They want 350, and we've gotten two?
85.
Oh.
As of yesterday.
And then they have to...
The other thing they wanted was at least 100 that reported having at least one short-term rental within that two-minute walk that we described in the, in the survey methodology. We are already well over that.
Okay, and then how long does it take them to get the results back in usable form?
A couple of weeks.
So you should have something back from them within a month.
So, I mean, they're gonna, there's gonna be the numbers, and then they're gonna want to make sure that they've got the right mixes demographically in different neighborhoods and things like that. Now, it looks, it looks like neighborhood-wise, we're about right, right now, in terms of what's come in, in having it spread out across the village, so we look to be on track with that, but the other checks we still, they still have to do. And that, that might drive the requirement for the numbers up if they're going to satisfy certain other...
Do we know how many people they mail this out to?
Four thousand homes. That's half our homes.
I'd like to make sure we're on target with Darren here, and I think we're interested questions, but we're wandering off. Where else do you want us to focus on this tonight?
Right now, let's, let's look at this table. If we think that short-term rental, once we define it, that lodging is the appropriate place, this is where we propose to put it. Second step would be, where are we going to put Xs on this table? Let's knock off, can I...
Are we talking about that now?
Sure.
Sure, can we, can we get, can we knock off some of the, what I think are the easier ones first?
Go right ahead.
All right, starting on the far right-hand side, VC, that is Village Center. X, we have a number of...
Let's not have this conversation yet.
I thought you were leading there too, Jeff, just a minute ago, but I agree, we don't have to, we don't have to do that. That gets into phase three, I think, right? I think it's fairly obvious that some of these are...
But what does it do?
There are, there are things where you could obviously say it's appropriate, but I, I don't, I don't think it would advise for you all to, to start to contemplate...
Right, yeah.
Things that might not, where it might not be appropriate until you have all the information in front of you.
Before you get it, I agree.
Well, I'm asking about to help Darren right now. What is the low-hanging fruit that might hurt, help Darren for, for the next work product?
Well, the lowest-hanging fruit right now is to put short-term rental in the lodging section, define it.
Which I think makes sense, okay? From what you're asking there, so to have it on that chart, I think, makes sense, to start putting in Xs, I totally agree with Jeff on this, there is so much more information we need to have before we start putting Xs in.
Right. Any question with lodging, then? I was thinking about that earlier, but this, this is good. So we know that's where it's going to be. Yep.
That's great, that's really...
Definition?
Sure.
Well, is that, are we going through it the way you, let's finish this off and go through it, make sure we've covered the things you want us to cover.
Well, I have a tendency to get a little bit further down the road, that's why I started talking about Xs and all, and...
Right, we'll hold the Xs.
I know, you're really, Jeff, but I...
We'll hold the Xs for...
I wanted to get going, so, I mean, we talked a little bit about the definition, so let's move down to definition. So right now, what we're showing is an occupancy that is offered or available by short-term lease, or otherwise for a time period or lease term of less than 30 days in a residential dwelling unit for a cumulative total of more than 14 days in the calendar year. That 14 days was built in as kind of that, you can use it for up to 14 days a year, and then after that, it really becomes a short-term, it really becomes that short-term rental use.
So when I look...
We address the property owner who's present in this framework.
The property owner's present.
You're talking about potentially what, a whole-house rental?
That, you didn't want a situation where the property owner is present to qualify as a short-term rental, right?
I, I think we discussed that before, we said, no, we're not going to include that at this time, we'll just look at the short-term rentals as being a whole-house rental.
My, my point is that definition would apply to a property owner renting, renting an occupancy within their home.
Yeah.
I can make, I, if we're all, I think that the issue that we've seen is whole-house rentals are the ones causing some of the concern within the neighborhood. I don't think, you know, I, we haven't heard much where the homeowners at, at home, not controlling the property, anybody...
So should we say a whole-house occupancy that is offered?
I'll get it, I can make, I can make that adjustment based on what I think, it'll be a whole-house occupancy. I think Jane had some commentary about whether a property owner is not present, I can build something into that. If we're all, if we're all in agreement that that's the route we want to go, I can do that, that's, it's not an issue.
An occupancy in a principal or accessory residential dwelling unit without the property owner or property owner's representative concurrently residing on the premises for consideration for an actual time period or a lease term, whichever is shorter, of 30 consecutive days or less.
I don't, it hits, it hits some of the things that we've just been talking about, I just, I would need to just think about it in wordsmith a little bit, but I think that hits everything that you're, that you're talking about from a, from a concern, I think it hits your, the concern you raised, Jeff, it brings in the whole house, the whole-house thing, I think it's fine, I just need to, again, I just looked at it today, so let me, let me...
Yeah.
Digest it just a tad bit. But I think that, I think that between, between what we've got proposed here and what you've just discussed, I think we can hybrid something and make it work, if need be, if needs be.
Yeah, the definitions are very important.
Okay, so that, that one's done. What next? That's all I got, I don't, I, I got the table, I got the revocation of the permit, where I think we, I need to work on that a little bit.
And you're fine with the definition?
I'm, definition, from my perspective, I think I have enough to refine that a bit, so it really becomes, let me work on that revocation thing, some of the, some of the questions that Jane had asked, we didn't cover everything, but I'll have a response for some of that stuff.
Sure, you've, you've gotten along yet, yeah, pretty well.
But, and we've, we've decided that we're gonna, we're gonna likely put that as a lodging use, or under the lodging table on, on section 8.2, 8.5, and then we're gonna leave off the Xs for now, yes, so we're moving in the right direction from my perspective.
Now, Darren, you've, you've come back to this category of lodging for short-term rentals several times. I'm assuming that you've put it here because that's what you support, and I think that's what we support too, but you keep coming back to it, so is there...
No.
Is there some other issue there we should be thinking about? Maybe it should be in residential, maybe not, or...
I mean, it can, it can go, it could, it could go in either place, I think it could go in either place, but when you look at, when you look at where a bed and breakfast is, is housed on our table, I think it, I think it fits in, it can fit, because a bed and breakfast has to be in a, in a single-family residential property, I think it fits well under this category. It can go either or, it doesn't matter, I think it's more appropriate in this one potential, the way, the way this is currently structured.
It's lodging.
Yeah, yeah, and then, in fact, that's what, that's what folks have been telling us.
Right.
An alternative to hotel, right?
I mean, the...
I mean, both sides of the argument are, it's lodging, so...
As one of our prominent companies has stated to us in writing, that what's happened over the last several years is we've approved a thousand-room hotel without any process through the use of these short-term rental outfits. I'm not going to argue with that, their math, it's plausible, if you've got 400 houses, we all can do the math, so, and you sleep eight, you know? Lodging is the right fit, and I agree with that.
I could argue both areas, but yes, short-term lodging would, both of them work, it's just when it's, it works both, both ways, I think it's more appropriate here.
Okay.
I want to talk myself out of it.
If for some reason we come to a different conclusion, we'll come to a different later. Once these, once, once we start getting all these definitions and all the restrictions, how that's going to work.
An easy move.
For all of the Village Pinhurst, okay. All right, question?
Just one second, I, I think we covered, Jeff, any questions you have, Jane?
Yeah.
Please.
Based on what you now know, what does the next meeting when we meet like, going to be like? What, what product will you have for us?
I think, let me answer that, I think that you're going to see a revised, a revision of this, and I hope to be bringing you the results of the survey.
But what about the municipal code part we went through earlier?
That's done, yeah.
That's baked, we've got that baked, we'll see a revised of this, we have, may have some survey data, okay.
ETC...
Will allow us to start talking about Xs.
So ETC will have everything done for you within the next two weeks, you think?
Possible.
We hope it's possible, we hope it'll happen, we can't, we can't, ETC can't do something it can't do, but that'd be great if they can get that to us, for sure. All right, we agreed, then we've come to the end of the discussion, but this evening on the ordinance changes on our agenda here, right?
Yes.
And I don't see, well, we have the proposed draft video text amendment, but I'm...
I'd like to address that.
Okay, that's your, okay, give us a comment on your, your favorite work.
Based on some additional input from a few citizens in current review, I've presented for the council, and obviously the public, I'm calling it 3.0, because it's the third version of a preamble and some text amendment, and in the text area, what we've done is incorporated what we refer to as the Darren and Alex version of how things should look, which is, I think, fine, I think it's a, a, a good system and understandable, and so I, I'm welcome further comments, I don't want to go into any detail tonight to discuss this, but I would like to in our next meeting to go into some more detail. I think the preamble, preamble states a pretty strong case, I think we can make it even stronger, and, which is why I'm seeking additional input, but I think it reflects the, many of the comments that we've heard from residents of Pinehurst over the last six months now, and I think it, it addresses this very idea of just limiting short-term rentals in residential areas, and being sure we have a good set of rules for everybody to follow without prohibiting short-term rentals in the Village of Pinehurst. The, the informal, I call it informal because we don't have an exact amount of the number of short-term rentals in our community, but the informal review of where they now exist indicates with our math that about 42% of these short-term rentals are located now in districts that are not single-family residential, and 58%, it looks like, are in single-family residential. So the short-term rental industry will still be thriving, and it could obviously grow in those areas, and so we, I don't think we have to fear that there's going to be a prohibition put in place, certainly not anybody on this council, I've heard anybody mention that, I have been corrected by some citizens when I said that before regarding the citizens, but, so, I seriously seek any improvements, edits, there's no pride of authorship here, and there's a variety of folks who have noodled on this, and I welcome any thoughts, thank you.
And I appreciate your working on this, and I, I particularly think you've done a great job on the, all the recitals and making the case, and we, we are going to need to do that, and I, I put together a while back an outline that, and I had some stuff in there too, and we can continue to work on that, I think that's going to be important to do to, to state the case.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I hope this doesn't jade you, and we get other information, and we can all look at it open-mindedly, if so, whatever we have from the, the survey, whatever it is, I do hope this council can approach this from an open mind, I realize there's a lot of, a lot of pressures that are coming from various citizens and things like that, but we have a responsibility to make sure that we are truly looking at things and what's the best for the village.
I agree with that, but I'd like to make a comment because of, about that data, I, I was one of the lucky few who have received, by mailbox, a survey. I went and filled it out, so I am looking forward to the data, okay, I, I will be honest with you, I didn't quite figure out why they didn't just ask some darn specific polling questions to solicit firm answers, I, I, many years ago was involved in polling when I was running campaigns, and there's...
It was by design.
I understand, I, I, it's not the way I would have approached it, but they're the pros, however, I want to tell you, when I received this in the mail, which is why I was asking about the mailing list, it was addressed to Eva Kleckley or the current resident at 170 Palmetto Road, which is where my wife and I reside. Now, Eva Kleckley is my late mother-in-law, she passed away in 2018, and for four years prior to that, she lived in a nursing home in South Carolina. We would receive intentionally forwarded mail from her bank, and probably Social Security Administration, that was about it, she, she was, she died at 99, so she wasn't a big mail recipient, but the reason I raise this is, we're dealing with old names, at least there's one incidence, and we're dealing with a mailing list that's 4,000, one zip code, not multiple zip codes, so I, I just throw that out, I don't know if other residents may have received something that made, you know, makes you question a little bit about who's getting what, I, I understand the idea that they match the resident address with the person who goes online, I'm assuming that's the case, because that's what they said, so I'm, I'm doing that, but I must tell you, when I got this, it was a little surprising.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Pass it along, thanks.
Actually, there's two zip codes that could be used, 28374 and 28370, depending on a postbox. That's all, they've been doing that for years. Let me see that, Patrick, I haven't seen the actual invitation, so, not the, not the name, anyway, is there any other business to be brought before the work session? Is there a motion to adjourn the, adjourn the work session, please?
Motion to adjourn.
That's a motion by Patrick Prizel, is there a second? Second by Lydia Bosch, all in favor of closing the work session of June 28, 2020? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Session is closed, thank you all for your work.